We're good?
Okay. Welcome to our City Council meeting for Wednesday, November 12th. We will get started tonight with a pledge of allegiance by Councilmember-elect Matt Basham.
Please stand and replete the pledge of allegiance with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Matt. We'll go to item 4.2, City Council Comments and Recognitions.
I want to recognize the Southwest Chamber for putting on an amazing event last night for Mountain West. I knew it was some... Mountain West Chamber for putting on a beautiful Night of Heroes, where we got to celebrate local heroes, police fire, first responders, also business representatives, and just individuals inside the community. So it was a great event. Thanks, Sandra, for being part of that. She's not here with us right now, but thanks for helping set that up and getting us there.
Good. Any other comments from council? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item 5, Public Comment. Audience members may bring any item within the city's purview to the City Council's attention. Comments will be limited to two minutes. State law prohibits the council from acting on items that do not appear on the agenda. Public comments for this meeting will also be conducted electronically. Any person interested in addressing the council may submit a comment by emailing recorder@harriman.gov or by visiting harriman.gov/AgendasAndMinutes, where there's a link to fill out an online public comment form. Your statement will be incorporated into the public record. So at this point, I don't have any forms, any public comment tonight. Okay, seeing none, we will move on to our council reports for the evening. We'll start with Jared.
Nothing tonight, other than I look forward to boring you with UFA budget stuff coming up.
Can't wait. Teddy?
It is budget season. Jordan Basin Improvement District, we just had our meeting yesterday morning to go over the tentative budget. Couple key things. We do have a evening public hearing on the 25th of this month. That is a Tuesday evening at 6 o'clock at the Jordan Basin Improvement Headquarters in Bluffdale. It's right on the Riverton-Bluffdale border there. I can get you the exact address. This is the budget book. It's pretty... It's online. You're able to see it. There's every line item there. Lots of information in there. We are proposing... They're proposing a $2 raise from $33 to $35 on your sewer connection fee. That's all I have there.
Okay. Thank you, Sheri.
Just, we also, obviously, budgets. The Wasatch Frontwestern Recycling Board is having their public hearing for their budget, November 17th, which is this coming Monday, at 6:00 PM at 604 West, 6960 South, at the district offices for anybody who would like to participate or attend that. And then, we had an opportunity today. We're members of the South Valley Chamber. And one of the activities they have is leadership training that you can send people to. And we had two participants from Harriman City, Trevor Rem and Sandra Luell, and participated in that leadership training, and they graduated today. So it was really fun to go and celebrate that with them. And really is instrumental in helping develop leadership skills. They did a lot of service, a lot of activity, how to network and things like that. So we're really grateful for the opportunity they had and for the efforts they put into making this city great.
Thank you, Sheri. Tara?
Yes, I was just asked to talk one more time about the mosquito abatement district, the proposed tax increase. And there's a public hearing on December 8th at 6:00 PM. It's going to be an estimated average increase for a homeowner of 77 cents per year. But just wanted to have that on the record.
Seventy-seven cents a year? I like it. Thank you, Tara. The only real report I have, Wendy and I sat in on a call with FIFA to go over their team base camp. So we will know January, if I remember right.
Yep, they do their draws on December 5th. And then they'll know which region they're going to, and then we'll know in January or February.
So the teams will start touring. They actually will start touring some of the sites to decide where they want to be. We still think we'll be high up there, unless that information was wrong. But... So we should know January, February, which teams select. They will do a draw based on, like, the top team gets to choose first where they go, and then it goes down. But they think Salt Lake will be a draw based on altitude and the arrangements here. So Harriman, I should say. At Harriman will be a draw. So we'll let everybody know come January, February, what we're looking at there. Okay. We will move on to our reports and presentations. We've got a pretty cool one tonight. This is the presentation of Harriman City's first graduate of the FBI National Academy to Deputy Chief Stromberg. And we're going to start with chief.
I'll present it. He actually is the one receiving it. And sadly, old age has struck, so you're going to watch me as Todd teases me off to change my glasses. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight it is my honor to recognize Deputy Chief Stromberg for his outstanding achievement in graduating through FBI National Academy, a program that represents the highest standards of leadership and professional development in law enforcement. To mark this accomplishment, we are privileged to have with us FBI Special Agent in Charge, Robert Bowles, who will speak about this prestigious honor and present Deputy Chief Stromberg with his graduations. If you'd both join me up here, please. And I will turn the time over to Special Agent in Charge, Bowles. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, chief. Appreciate it. I'm going to read from my handy phone here, because I, you know, can't memorize it all, but I will tell you how impressive being a graduate of the National Academy is. And hopefully, some of these facts can represent how, you know, how impressive and how much of an accomplishment it really is. So Chief Stromberg is part of a large cadre of individuals and law enforcement officers from around the country as the graduate of Session 293. And even though I say "large," it actually is quite small compared to the amount of law enforcement officers in the world and in the country. So let me read some facts here. So we founded, the FBI founded the National Academy in 1935 to elevate the level of professionalism and standards of local, state, and federal law enforcement agencies through centralized training. One of those things, when the FBI came to fruition, it was during the '30s, when we were chasing bank robbers and people like John Dillinger across state lines, and knowing that both local, state, and federal authorities needed to work together to accomplish the same mission, or different missions, with kind of similar results. And that was to get the bad guys. But how do we do that? How do we accomplish that and be on the same page? So we developed this National Academy to really get us all on the same page, build respect for each other, build a cadre of individuals who we can work with and work through throughout the course of our investigations and our missions. So only the top 1% of law enforcement officers from around the world are accepted into the FBI National Academy. It's a ten-week session, and it has 250 law enforcement officers. There are core components, such as academics, which are accredited by the University of Virginia, physical fitness, and networking. The applicants must meet a minimum requirement for character, rank, responsibility, and physical fitness. Specific to our area here in FBI Salt Lake, we are over Utah, Idaho, and Montana. And within that area, we submit and we take applications for review. Applicants are required to remain on the waitlist for a minimum of one year. And then our average wait time is three to five years before selecting someone. And then they have to have an FBI interview, held annually. And then, once interviewed, if selected, it's another two or four years before a student will attend an FBI National Academy session. And again, graduation's not guaranteed. They have to, you know, achieve some rigorous standards while they're doing the National Academy. So with that in mind, as a personal note, when I was at the academy myself, going through as a new agent almost 20 years ago, it was such a great thing to see our local partners and also international partners, because our international partners are part of the National Academy as well, and see what they do. And they represented to us the epitome of what we wanted as agents to become with having that opportunity to be a seasoned investigator, a seasoned leader, and someone who we could depend on. And each and every one of those people that graduate are people now that we really depend on as connective tissue within our community, between federal, state, and local. So I do want to present Deputy Chief Stromberg, first of all, with his certificate from the National Academy for graduation, Session 293. And so I'll just say he's completed the general course of instruction afforded by the National Academy at Quantico, the state of Virginia, for a period of 11 weeks, ending in the 13th day of March on the year of 2025. And Chief Carr, one of the coolest things is the fact that we now have a graduate here. Incredible opportunity, and hopefully, the first of many. But we want to show you, and which you've seen before, but this is the plaque with Deputy Chief Stromberg's name and information on it, and hopefully, we can fill those sometime soon.
Thank you very much.
All right, look here. All right, one, two, three. All right. Any others? One, two, three.
Mr. Mayor, if I might?
Yes?
I just, I do want to emphasize what a big deal that is and how important it is for police leadership. And so I've sent several chiefs throughout my career and commanders and things. And so I was really excited when Deputy Chief Stromberg was selected, because it is not an easy process.
Well said. Congratulations, Cody. Well done. Thank you, chief. Okay. We'll move on to 9.1, Public Hearing in Consideration of a Resolution Amending the Fiscal Year 2026 Budgets for the City of Harriman. Kyle?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few proposed budget amendments to go over with you tonight. First, I just want to go over some general reasons why we're doing a budget amendment now. The main one is to carry over any projects that were started in the prior fiscal year. So as you know, we have a number of projects that we go through. Our city engineer went through a capital project update, and there's a lot of projects on that list. There's times we need to carry over funding to future fiscal years to finish those projects up. A big one is we've received a number of grants. Also, as our city engineer pointed out, that we do need to budget those grants. And then there are some miscellaneous items that have come up since the last budget amendment a couple months ago. So this presentation focuses on the larger ones. There are more detail in the email I sent out late this afternoon. So I'm first going to go over the general and public safety funds. So the first is on the general fund carryovers of $649,000. The main one on that is pavement management funds that are used to rehabilitate and maintain our city streets. Second is we did receive... We have a Miller Crossing trench repair that we will get reimbursed for from the sewer district for $270,000, so that's budgeting in that revenue line item. The next one is reducing debt service. So last year, due to unfavorable interest rates, we did not issue a capital lease we were intending. Because we do a two-year budget, that was already in the budget, so that is removing that lease. We did purchase those vehicles, just as a reminder, but did end up paying cash for those. And then the next one that I point out as important is our Public Works Director requested that we move half of what it will take to rehab Rosecrest Road next year, once that project is complete by the Water District. So it'll be approximately $3.2 million project. He requested we split that over two years. So we don't have this massive $3.2 million expenditure we need to come up with next year. So this would be coming out of our existing pavement management fund, so that will reduce those funds and transfer them into capital projects where it's a little easier to track. And where it's such a major project, that's the place it should go. And the police fund, we do, as you know, receive liquor allotment, which is funds we receive from the sale of liquor that is used to reduce alcohol-related crimes within, not just the city, but the state. We get an allotment of those funds. We are required to spend it on certain things. The $145,000 is the amount we have not spent but have received on that. And then we did hire new officers last year, as you may remember. And we still need to do a carryover for some of the equipment that they need. Moving on to what I'm calling the non-police funds. So these are within the Public Safety Department, but does not deal with specifically with police. The first is funding three positions for contingency crossing guards. So we have found where we budget so strict, there might be a time where an additional crossing is warranted. This would allow us to hire those crossing guards as they come up, as, you know, as the traffic committee and the Police Department determine those are needed. So it's not just willy-nilly. They do have to go through that process to warrant that a crossing guard is needed at that location. And the other one is a software upgrade for code enforcement, so that they can issue parking tickets through public safety versus the court. Our ordinance actually requires that they be issued through the city and not through the court. So this is to allow their system to issue those tickets. Over on the right, and you'll see this, and as we go through the other funds, I did list out some notable carryovers, as I mentioned, pavement management. Our city attorney did request he did have some legal counsel, outside legal counsel funds, that were not used last year. He's anticipating possibly needing those in the upcoming year. He does use those funds, not just for general litigation, but there are times he needs specialized guidance on things such as broadband or other telecommunications-specific items, to give you an example. And then snow removals. You may or may not remember, last year was not a heavy snow year. We did have a number of storms, but less than we normally do. There was a request from Public Works to transfer the amount that hadn't been spent over to the next year, in case we do have a larger snow year, to act as a cushion. Moving on to our impact fee funds. As you can see, in both the park and transportation, they have quite a bit that's being carried over to the next year, $6.4 million for park impact and $1.7 million for transportation. I do want to mention park impact, especially due to the discussion we had back in April regarding projects. We did reduce a few of those park projects. We were able to reduce the budget $65,000. And also, just to highlight the importance of impact fee revenue, looking at the projections and the actual amounts we've received, I am requesting that we reduce our impact fee revenue in parks by $1.4 million. As you know, the parks are going through an impact fee study right now. However, by the time that's adopted, and it goes through the 90-day waiting period, it will be next year before the new fees are adopted, anyway. One thing with both park and transportation, I will note, is we were aware that with the pits coming online, we would be receiving less revenue. It is difficult, however, to project what is going to develop when. So that is the main reason why those need to be revised down. We did know this was coming. It's just a matter of we don't know when. And as you can see, over on the right-hand side, there are some notable carryovers. White Hollow Trailhead, as we discussed, the capital project update in the work meeting. We do have some contingency funds for the Spores Complex. As you know, you did approve a design contract at the last meeting. There are still some funds in there in case other design or other needs are met. Otherwise, those can be rolled into something else if they aren't used. Over in transportation, we do have the Real Vista and Mountain View corridor improvements. This is split between the impact fee funds. And then you'll see on the general fund, capital projects, there is another amount there, too. And we are receiving $500,000 from UDOT for those improvements. Another one is the 118 South and 126 South reimbursement. A few council meetings ago, an updated reimbursement agreement was approved. That did expand the collection area and did also increase the amount we would have to reimburse the developer for those costs. So this is requesting $534,000 to account for that increased collection area. And as a reminder, we don't reimburse unless we actually receive the impact fees on this reimbursement agreement. In the capital projects fund, as you can see, we have almost $14 million in carryover projects. Talking about those grants, 7300 West Extension. We had budgeted part of the amount we were getting from the state on that. This is to complete the full, $14.5 million on that. And I had mentioned that Rosecrest Road transfer. There's the offset of that going into capital projects. For Main Street Landscaping, we did get a grant from Jordan Valley Water for $229,000, so that is budgeting that. One important... Two important things is, one, we were budgeting just a standing amount of A-Cup funding and for the public. It's money we received from the federal government to help create a buffer around Camp Williams. We would purchase the land and get reimbursed from the Army for that. We're seeing less and less opportunities of those come up, so removing the funding source. And then if something does come up, I will come to the council and request a budget amendment at that time, versus just having this $2 million sitting out there. And then we did receive a $19 million grant from UDOT for Harriman Boulevard from 6800 West to U111. That is to budget that $19 million grant. New for this year was a grant fund. So this is where we're going to start putting more of our grant funds that have a direct, that the grant's paying 100% of the item. So we did receive a mental health grant from the state last year for first responder mental health checkups. So that's transferring over the $56,000. And then we're also putting our CDBG funding into this grants fund. So this is to budget the $492,000 that we've received, or we will be, we've been awarded for the community center. And then also, our Assistant City Manager requested transportation services for seniors. So this is the Riverton Bus for $15,000. In the capital equipment fund, just a small carryover, $59,000, and the majority of that are IT projects that IT is working on. One thing I mention a lot is it's great to have a brand-new building like when the City Hall was new. However, the bad thing from an IT perspective is everything is breaking at the same time. So he is working... Luckily, we have funds budgeted, but he's working through those projects. And then one is the Police Department requested to move up their purchase of their motorcycle replacements due to planned model changes at Harley-Davidson and compatibility with the parts and the training that our existing people have. And the offset is they were going to delay one of their vehicle purchases to offset the purchase of those four motorcycle replacements. Moving on, so this is the Capital Projects Bond that was issued last June. As you may or may not remember, at the time, you did approve with the budget a number of projects. We were anticipating, when we did the biennial budget, that we'd be issuing a second bond this year. Most likely, we will not be issuing that second bond and finishing the projects from the first. So this is to adjust the budget to match those projects that were approved last year. And then moving on to water, capital projects and water impact fees. As you can see, water has a number of carryover projects, about $19 million. As you can see, some of the major carryovers include our Old Town Water Project, which we have an EPA grant for, 6400 West Water Lines, the Zone 2 and 3 water improvements at the south end of the city. So that is a $9 million carryover, but we are using bond proceeds from our 2021 bond for that. And then we have a couple other grants that we have received through the state. And then water impact, as you can see, they do have a few carryovers, including utilities associated with the 60th West Road widening. A couple other things just of note. On the impact fee side is the White Hollow Trailhead restroom that was discussed. I believe it's the last meeting or the meeting before. This $100,000 is the water portion to put utilities for that future restroom. And then one is, that isn't currently in the budget, is the water lines associated with the state road, 111 reconstruction. So this is a joint project with Olympia. And this is the city's portion of the upsize cost. So this is not the cost of the portion of the project that will be serving Olympia. It is the cost for the city, upsizing for the city portion of that. Finally, storm drain and storm drain impact fees. So storm drain has about 1.5 million of carryover projects. That does include a flood mitigation grant, and then the automobile pond relocation. And then one of the carryovers on the impact fee side is the storm drain for Rose Creek and then 60th West improvements. With that, are there any questions before the public meeting, or the public hearing?
Thank you, Kyle. Okay. At this point, we will open the public hearing on this item. See no comment? I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion on the item, or I'll look for a motion?
Motion approved. Resolution number R53-2025 approving amendment to the 2026 fiscal budget.
Motion by Jared.
Second.
Second by Sheri. Jared?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Sheri?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. That motion carries. Our second public hearing, Public Hearing in Consideration of a Resolution Amending the Water Utility Fee Schedule. Kyle?
Thank you, Mayor. This is to discuss a potential water rate fee increase as recommended by the last water rate study we did. So just a few things, expectations for tonight. So one is just a quick review of what the previous recommendation was from our consultant. Review fiscal year 2025 financial performance. Review what staff's rate increase recommendation is. And then a public hearing and potential council action. So going back in history, not too far back, so in March 2024, the City Council did adopt a water fee rate study... a water fee rate study with recommendations. The recommendations were to have yearly increases for the 10-year span of the study and also bonding for capital projects. And just as a refresher, the five-year recommended rate increases were 16.3% for the current year that we're in, and then that was implemented, 13% for the upcoming year, well, really the year we are currently in, and then 13% 2027, and then nine and a half in 2028, and then 2029 on 3% increases. The main reason for the increases is to get the large amount of capital projects that need to be done financed and a funding source for those bonds put into place. One thing the council did direct staff to do was to come back every year with an analysis of how the water fund performed versus the rate model, and then go from there on a potential rate increase. So, good news, and this is just from a financial perspective, is that water rate revenue was much higher than expectations last year, so our rate revenue was about 2.2 million, more than what the model expected. The large majority of that is due to consumption. The model did assume that we would have a rate of growth, and it stayed pretty consistent with that rate that was in the study. We also did receive more interest income than we were expecting. Interest rates have been historically relatively high. Of course, you've heard in the news that they are starting to do rate drops, so that will decrease our interest revenue, interest income. On the operations side, as you can see, they were, they saved approximately 1.7 million. The majority of that was repairs that were anticipated, were much less than expected, and I did give this caveat last time we spoke about this, is we are seeing an uptick in repairs that are having to be done, emergency repairs. So I can't guarantee that the water fund will do as great as they did last year, but they, up until the last month or two of the fiscal year, they were doing really well in terms of their repair funds. And then we do have two positions that are currently frozen, and there has been some turnover within the department. And then on capital expenses, as we had mentioned when we did adopt the rate study, we would come back with a list of capital projects and discuss bonding. That did not occur, other than the projects that we had to do because they had been started. There was another area that was being started. For example, if it's a road impact, a road project, it most likely also had water lines. We budgeted all of it together versus trying to wait, because that doesn't make sense on that. So, large table here, but this is what the fee study, what the rate changes would be considering how well we did in the last fiscal year. So the amount, if we kept all the increases the same as recommended, we would have approximately 8.2 million available for appropriation. This is in addition to the capital expenditures and the other expenditures that were in the rate study. So as you can see, this indicates that we have excess funds, and as staff, we thought let's look at the rate, the rate increases that were being proposed in the model. So what staff's proposal is, is to spread that excess, those excess funds we have over the next four years and just have a level even 6.5% rate increase over the next four years. And you can see at the bottom on that, available for appropriation. By the end of fiscal year 2029, we have approximately 79,000 available after everything is paid, all the projects are done, which, given a 27, 28 million budget, that's fairly close to even. And here are a few sample bill increases. This was pulled from the rate study. So as you may or may not remember, they did break out low, medium, high, and very high users with the rate study. And with the tier changes we made, as you can see on that 2025 column, low users felt less of the brunt of the overall 16.3% rate increase. It was the high users who saw the most of it with those tier changes. And with, with the 6.5% proposed increase, the staff's recommending a low users bill for the year would go up $38. You can see a medium user 44, high user 73, and very high 101. Just of note, that is a residential user that does not have access to secondary. And then as you can see at the bottom, that is a customer that does have access to secondary So a few things to consider. Number one is the model that staff put together assumes that the city council will adopt the budget for those capital projects that are budgeted in there. That will be at a future meeting, and the recommended rate increase does fully fund the recommended reserve levels. One reason that that might be a good idea to do right now is if, for some reason, we have another dry summer or very wet winter and people consume less, or there's other factors and we don't hit our revenue targets, we do have those reserves to help even out the rate increases, so we're not doing, we're not fluctuating as much. We're trying to keep things level. And then, as I mentioned, I've already mentioned some of this, but future increases do depend on several factors, including weather, growth, water purchases. We purchase a significant amount of water from Jordan Valley Water. We are dependent on what they are going to do as their increases. We've made some estimates in our revenues, but if they decide, you know, to do a double-digit rate increase, it might throw our model off. With that, are there any questions before the public hearing?
I just have a question. If we don't do, what was it, was supposed to be this year, 13%?
Yep.
If we don't do the 13 and we do the 6.5, is that based on usage from last year? Because, yes, last year was a historic dry summer, and so our usage shot through the roof, so we're not basing it off of that usage?
No, it's going off of the recommendation, what the rate model assumed we'd use. So that, that's a more average historical number, not, not last year's usage.
Thank you.
Real quick, my concern is if we go off of the, the rate change schedule, what we proposed at the beginning, obviously not considering the usage from this year, and do the 13 to see its two-year track record, rather than it's almost half of that, it's exactly half of that cost moving forward across the next two years. I don't know if we've got a big enough scope or picture to see the current trending. Obviously, I want to see usage go down, but then that also has revenue go down, so. I'm not sure what the right answer is, but.
I think we're always just trying to digest the numbers, right? So you gave it the answer in there, but I'll attempt to tease out, tease it out into different wording maybe, right? So we have the study done. Biggest problem for us is that an aging system and replacement costs, et cetera, were never contemplated in, in that rate schedule, right? That was the big issue that we had, as well as some of the secondary planning, et cetera. So we tackled those, implemented the proposed schedule. This was the first year of it. So after this first year, to me, the answer is not so much the rate use, yes, or the usage, yes, we had increased usage, but the rate for that usage basically covers the cost of providing that drop of water. We didn't necessarily bank a whole lot more money from that versus not having as many of the repairs that maybe we expected to have.
That's a fair assumption, and another item is we were planning on issuing debt sooner, so we do have a year with no debt service payments also.
So we incorporated into that capital projects, which either we haven't been able, or we didn't need to do, but my fear is we still need to do those, but the cap, but the cost for some of those projects is incorporated and maybe coupling it with some other projects simultaneously. So it's not that we're kicking the can, so to speak, or, or that we received a windfall from high usage.
Correct.
It was from those other factors. Is that fair?
I think it's all together. You're certainly correct, but I do think the additional revenue.
A bit of both?
Yes, yes.
Would, would we be preemptively suggesting a rate, not doing the full rate increase of the 13% from the fee study? And take the, a look at it at the end of 27, or 26, sorry? Or, because it seems like we haven't had enough track to go down.
Well, so to just continue that line of thinking, right? So the savings from one hand and the little bit of increased revenue from the other hand, as far as the financial model goes, right? We're talking about compounding.
Correct.
Math problem, right? So the initial model is saying, we know we're, we're starting with basically the end number and working backwards from today. If you have, the way, the way I describe it to my clients when they want to start saving money, say for retirement, dollar you put away today, so the extra revenue we have today is worth more than the dollar you save later or the dollar we collect later, right? So by having savings from which, from, from several sources in the first year helps us reduce the amount we have to collect later because that, that compounding works for us in the opposite direction.
I think that's correct, and maybe another, another point that might help clarify things is, with the capital expenditures, expenses, we actually went and remodeled it, so our engineering department's been working quite a bit on getting the CIP list together, determining when they will actually have the bandwidth to do the projects. So that did spread the projects out a little bit. We were able to fine-tune more when we would actually need to issue those bonds, which then reduced our debt service payments, because we assumed we would be issuing the bonds fairly quickly, but then looking at, okay, what can engineering realistically do? That did spread that out. That's also another reason why in 2029, it was only anticipated to be a 3% increase. The recommendation would be a 6.5% to level, to level that out. The part of it is we were having to move the capital projects down a little bit, so.
That makes way more sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think from, from that fee study, I think we had an equal system payout, and we chose this one instead, though, if my memory serves me. My opinion, I mean, obviously, less percentage is better for everybody around. It, it looks like we're trending right, but I would, I would still, I'd be the 13. I'll let you go to.
So just, as, as we were directed, we're going to bring this back every year to you, so if it's wrong, we'll, we'll catch it. We're not proposing that you just go to straight 6, but that's what we model it would look like, but that could change. It could drop again, it could go up.
Based on those factors and savings, there's no reason to take more money out from the public's pocket.
I agree.
To put it in the bank, right? When we're looking at changing the schedule for some of those projects, so that makes a lot more sense to, to scale it back. Great news.
Okay. Did the public hearing? Because we've not done the public hearing, right?
No.
Okay. We'll open the public hearing on this item. See no comment? I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any further discussion then? Or I'll look for a motion. I think we're mostly on the 6.5 then.
Yeah, just a comment. I mean, I, I agree with not taking money now from our constituents. So, yeah, I would be in agreement to the proposed.
And like Jeff said, right, we'd be in a direction to bring it back every year.
Yeah.
Reassess it. All right, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve resolution number R54-0-2025 approving an amendment to the Harriman City master fee schedule as proposed.
Motion by Jared.
Second.
Second by Sheri. Jared?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Sheri?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. That motion carries. Thank you, Kyle. We'll move on to our consent agenda. Look for a motion.
I would ask that we pull 10.3. I just wanted to discuss that for a second.
Okay.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Okay, we'll pull 10.3. Look for a motion on the remaining items.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of 10.3.
Motion by Sheri.
Second.
Second by Teddy. We'll go Tara?
Yes.
Sheri?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Okay, and we will hit 10.3 then. Approval of the Thomas Butterfield Community Service Scholarship Policy.
The only, the basis here, I have, I love the changes. Good work on this. Thanks for your efforts on this. I'm glad that we're not tracking the checks and looking for grades and things like that. I think that we award it and they have to be responsible. But the part that concerns me is the judging committee. It's requiring five members, two city council, three staff, and even open to some, it says, one or more representatives from a Harriman area school. I don't think any Harriman area school should be on it, because if you have one on it, you better have them all on it. And it's a city-sponsored scholarship, not a, so I think it should just be city-focused. And I just think five people is a lot on a judging committee. Sometimes we only get three or four applications, and so I wonder if we should scale that back a little bit and not have quite as many people on the judging committee. How do you all feel about that?
I totally agree with the schools.
I think, yeah, I think three is probably a good number as well.
Okay. So do you want it to be two city council members and the one staff? Or one city council, two staff?
I think two council members would be good.
Because it comes under our budget, so that's good.
Yep.
So are you good at that?
I, I would suggest you do two counselors and one staff and the other one. It is, it is really the council just making the decision.
So if you guys are okay with that, I would rather those changes be made to that other. I thought it looked great. Good job on the wording.
Love that. Good catch. Let's do it.
Get it done.
Let's do it.
I, I had a question about this, too, actually. I didn't realize that it was open to people who had graduated within the last five years. And so, is that, I mean, that's fairly wide.
I hadn't, that was new. Is that a new addition to the policy?
No.
I don't believe so.
I didn't know that either. Okay. Yeah. Okay. And so, but that's been something that we've been practicing. Okay. Because I know a few people have asked me, I think in the past, and I probably have given them wrong information, that have said, oh, damn, forgot to apply. I should have said, well, apply next year.
I think, I think it's okay as it is. I mean, it leaves the door open for those that maybe didn't choose to go to school, but now.
Or military ambition or whatever.
Yeah, any of those things.
I agree. I think, I think there's a lot of people who maybe don't know exactly when they graduate that they want to go to school. It gives the opportunity to have, have that, but they're still service-oriented and they still have to do the qualifications for service, so I think it's good. I agree. I didn't know that either. So.
Okay.
Again?
Yep.
Okay, I'll just make a motion to approve the Thomas Butterfield Community Service Scholarship Policy with the changes to the judging committee. Should be two city council members and one staff member.
Eliminating the schools.
Yeah, yeah, that's all that should be on that committee. Just those two.
Okay, we've got a motion by Sheri.
Second.
Second by Jared. We'll go Jared?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Sheri?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. That motion carries. Thank you. Good catch. Okay, we'll go to 11.1. Discussion or consideration of a franchise agreement with Sennawave. Todd?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item has been previously discussed with, with you in a work session. Last time, we talked about Sennawave applied to have a franchise agreement with the city. They were requesting two changes to our template that we use with other telecommunications, broadband, and cable companies. The council directed me that those changes, that you didn't want to, those changes implemented, and ultimately, Sennawave was okay with our template that we send over to them. In your packet is a signed copy. I do want to note that these franchise agreements, I think we will need to, as applications come in, make a determination on a case-by-case basis on what does our right-of-way look like and where are these going, and are they interfering with our facilities? As of right now, I don't have any information that this, this is a problem. I think if we start getting a lot more applications, then we can have that discussion and talk about potentially not, not approving that type of franchise agreement. But as of right now, staff is recommending approval for this agreement. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Say thanks for getting it to this point. It's been a process for you, and I appreciate it.
Okay, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number R55-2025 approving a franchise agreement with Sennawave for telecommunications services.
Okay, motion by Sheri.
Second.
Second by Jared. Tara?
Yes.
Sheri?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. That motion carries. Okay, 11.2. Consideration to Reduce Impact Fees Charged to Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District. Bryce?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, so tonight, we want to talk about a project by Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District, which I mentioned. Travis is from Jordan Valley Water. If we have any questions on the project, they are expanding their water treatment plant at the southeast kind of end of the city here, right up against Welby Jacobs Canal and the Bluffdells on the east side of that canal. And so, this is a unique project. Usually, we'll get a building permit, and this is, and we'll charge impact fees at the building permit stage, whether that be a commercial development, residential development. This one, obviously, is neither of those. It's a utility and a partner of ours, and so, we wanted to discuss how to deal with impact fees here. So, like I mentioned, a project, three new chemical buildings to treat the water, one new water storage reservoir, and improvements to the existing filter system there. So, that's kind of the overall project. And again, they do require building permits through the city, and typically, that's where we'll charge our city impact fees. Based on our review and a report that was submitted by Jordan Valley Water, we found that of the infrastructure impact fees, there really isn't or is a negligible amount of impact to the city system, so I'll go through a couple of those. Water is kind of an obvious one. They're not connecting to our water system. There's no meter, there's no water connection from the water, from Harriman city water system, and as you know, they supply actually a lot of our water. So, that one, you know, is pretty much a no-brainer. There would be no fee in our recommendation. Traffic, they are adding, you know, some employees, five new employees is what they reported, which would add a little bit of traffic to the roads, but if you consider their location, their entrance is off of Mountain View, and then the other side is a Bluffdale road that comes into the other side. So, you could maybe make an argument that the employee lives in Harriman, drives through some Harriman roads to get there, but you're looking at twenty, at maximum, twenty new trips a day. And so, our recommendation, again, negligible impact to the city. If we did, you know, calculate it based on twenty trips a day, which is, you know, the high estimate, it would be about $8,000. Stormwater, similar to the water, there's no connection to the Harriman stormwater system because they're so far in the corner of the city. They actually manage that all on-site for, by themselves, and so, there's actually no tying into, you know, regional creeks either, because that's also an impact that Harriman would have to deal with, but there's none of that. Now, there are the other impact fees that we are recommending continue as normal, which is public safety and fire impact fees. The way those are charged is when a building is built or brought bigger, it's charged per square foot because of the potential for those services to respond, whether it's a fire or police respond on-site. Because of this situation, we're recommending that that would continue to be the case, that they are increasing their operation potential, increasing the potential for a need for a police or a fire response. So, those are listed there. And yeah, that's our recommendation. Wave impact fees associated with the public infrastructure, which is water, traffic, and storm drain, due to their negligible impact. And in accordance with state law, it actually, you'll see in the staff report that we put in there, actually requires the city, if we do charge an impact fee, that is shown to not be an impact, that we would have to refund that fee. And then, we are recommending charging the public safety and fire impact fees as normal. So, like I said, if you have questions on the project, Travis is probably our best resource, but otherwise, I can answer any other questions.
Pretty straightforward to me, I think.
Impacts are to be something that's being impacted. If it's not impacting, we shouldn't be charging a fee for it.
We're going to make you wait this whole time only to just do a quick yes. So, we're going to look for a motion on this item.
Motion to approve Resolution Number R56-2025, approving reduction of impact fees as recommended by staff for the Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District.
Motion by Jared?
Yes.
Second by Teddy? Jared?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Sheri?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. That motion carries. Thank you for being here tonight. 11.3. Discussion and consideration of amendments to Harriman City Code, Section 7-4-8 regarding restoration requirements for roadway excavation. Bryce?
Okay, so this will be a little bit of review for what we discussed in the work meeting a few meetings ago to update our city ordinance. So, let me take a step back for public consumption here. We've found in the last few years, there's a little bit of a hole or loopholes in our ordinance required, on the requirements of restoring a road or allowing roadway excavation. So, there's an ordinance that dictates how the road, when it's cut, how it has to be restored, but there is not a requirement or a moratorium on new roads, and our language on how to restore and what to restore is a little bit ambiguous, so we wanted to be specific and look at kind of a moratorium on brand-new roads. But with that said, this is our kind of current, you know, look at, if someone puts in a utility, cuts the road, what does it look like when they restore it? And so, currently, we require, this is kind of a picture, if you're on the side and you're actually, you know, below the road and you're looking at their cut down at the bottom there, and then the requirement to come up and require what we call a T-patch, which helps make sure that they compact the base underneath the road so that the walls of the trench aren't an issue when they bring in the new asphalt. And then, on top of that, a pretty big requirement is that we will require a mill and overlay of all of our trench cuts in the road. This is, this was a big improvement. This was 2017 that this was adopted in the Utah APWA, or American Public Works Association, in the Utah chapter, so most cities are following this. This helps significantly because, if you can imagine, that top black layer was gone, you would have a solid cut or line all the way through the asphalt into the base, so when water comes and finds that one cut in the road, it'll infiltrate down to underneath the asphalt, and that's where we'll really start to have a lot of problems. So, the mill and overlay in 2017 did help in the fact that we're not having a clean cut all the way down to the base where water can get in, freeze, and start to pop and cause all kinds of issues. But with that said, this is just a typical example, not, we haven't had any roadway cuts right out in front of City Hall, but we just picked that as an example here. If this is the initial cut, this would be the T-patch area, and then this would be the mill and overlay requirement as of today. So, as I mentioned, there were a couple of holes in the ordinance that we wanted to address, and this amendment will do the following. Add a three-year moratorium on brand-new pavements or reconstructed pavements, like if we've done a mill and overlay, or if we've rebuilt the road, like Anthem this year. That would put a three-year moratorium on roadway cuts. Or you'll sometimes see core cuts, which are like six-inch circles in the road. Those are what we call potholing, to kind of find existing utilities in the road. That would also be not allowed in the three-year period. Now, if you fall into the fourth or fifth year, it would allow some, a cut in the road, and let me take a step back. Obviously, in those three years, there could be a need or an emergency that comes up, a water line's leaking, that we need to even go in and cut the road, or another utility, a gas leak, you know, a gas company needs to come in. In those cases, there is an exception for emergent or urgent utility connections or issues that we need to repair. And then, if the road that is built is now five years old and there needs to be a cut, we are extending the requirement of that mill and overlay to not only be kind of the four feet outside of the cut, but it has to go from curb to curb and go 25 feet in each direction. That kind of helps soften the checkerboard kind of feel that you get when you run over some of the patches we have, but it also ensures that we have a clean surface throughout that. It also acts as a, you know, a deterrent to just come in and cut our roads whenever, you know, it is wanted. It is a little bit more costly for development or a contractor to do that. And then, additionally, we wanted to clarify that there is, when we do like a slurry seal or some kind of treatment on top of the road, that is a little bit different than a brand-new road, but it does protect the road, and then if we cut it, you know, the year after that, it wastes a lot of the money that the city spent in putting that treatment down, and so it does require an additional restoration if that road has just been slurry sealed or just been chip-sealed or treated with some kind of roadway preservation treatment. So, with that said, the, and I won't read this all, because there is a lot of words on both the existing and the proposed, but it is kind of a complete rebuild of the wording from the existing ordinance to the proposed ordinance, as I mentioned, with those kind of main points of moratorium on new roads, an added restoration if it's less than five years old. And back to one of the points that was discussed in the work meeting, we did add that if those exceptions are granted in the three-year window, they would fall under the five-year restoration requirement, so it is a little bit more of a, which was a request. Yeah, so with that, like, just kind of an example of our first, you know, current, we're not in the five-year window or anything, then what we would be, that middle one, is if we just treated it with a slurry seal, and then the last one is if it's in that five-year window of a new road. That kind of yellow area is the mill and overlay, so kind of the smooth surface that goes over all of it. So, with that said, I can answer any questions on the proposed ordinance amendment.
Love it.
Yeah, it's very easy to read, actually, and you can know what you're, if you sent that out to a contractor, they knew exactly what they could and cannot do.
Yeah, and that was the intent. There was some in the existing language, if you look at it, we kind of had to argue over things. Hopefully, this clarifies that a little bit.
Hopefully, it's a deterrent, because I hate that when you have a brand-new road and two months later, it's like, oh, there's a big hole in it again.
Yes, exactly. It's very upsetting from our side as well, so hopefully, this, like you said, is a deterrent for that.
Okay, I'll look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2025-25, amending Section 748 of the Harriman City Code regarding restoration of roadway surfaces following excavation.
Motion by Teddy. Second by Jared. Tara?
Yes.
Sheri?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. That motion carries. Thank you, Bryce. We'll go to 11.4. Review and Consider An Amendment to the Harriman City General Plan by Adopting a Water Use and Preservation Element as Required by Utah State Code. Michael, welcome.
Thank you. I will be, I'll just provide a quick introduction. Turn some time over to our consultant on this project. One thing I wanted to make mention of is, I know this is something especially that Council Member Orrin has been anxious about in her role, dealing with water. I remember when this state code was amended that required us to do this, Nathan said, "Don't jump into the deep end of the water just yet, because we're going to learn from others, you know, how to do this more efficiently." And he was right. By the time we got to this point in the process, we were able to learn from other municipalities and take advantage of that. Also, the recent water master plan that was done, that you adopted, that provided all of the relevant data that we needed for this project, so it was pretty smooth. It was presented to the planning commission on October 15th. I think I stated this in report, they recommended 60 for this amendment to the general plan. It is a separate document, obviously. I think perhaps moving forward, this could be folded into the body of the general plan whenever that is amended in the future. So, with that said, I know that we have a timeline for some of you tonight, so we'll just turn a few minutes over to Susan Petheram.
Good evening. Good to be here and talk with you about this. The presentation is just a quick overview of the state requirements and the structure of the element. So, to start off, this is a new requirement that's in Utah State Code for general plans. Four cities of the fourth class or larger, and there's four main key components of what needs to be included in this element. A good understanding of the effect of your permitted development on water demand and your water infrastructure needs. And then, they also want to see methods for reducing water demand from both existing development and future development, as well as modifications that you can make to the way the city operates to reduce water use and support more water-efficient practices in the way the city, you know, tends to its buildings and its parks and open spaces. The element is structured to follow the same structure as the main general plan document, so we begin with an introduction, and then we have some context, local to Harriman as well as regional context, which is one of the requirements from the state, and in that, we provide some details on the water profile for Harriman City. In the third and fourth sections, we start talking about how Harriman's planning for the future with specifics in regard to water, thinking about not only what we want to achieve, but how Harriman can help make it happen with policies and strategies. We also include a section that has 10 guiding principles for being water-wise in Harriman, and these are just some of those things that build upon the water-efficient standards for new development. And then, because there's a lot of new terms, we have a section that just explains some of those key terms and definitions for planning for water in Utah and Harriman. So, taking a quick look at the water profile for Harriman, the average water use, and this is from 2023, was about 152 gallons, and that is per capita per day, and that is the general metric that is used by the state for understanding and evaluating progress towards water conservation. The city has a diversity of water sources, which is great for planning for the future, that you're not just relying on one source of water. So, there's the Five City Wells, as well as the Arnold Hollow Springs, but then the city gets the majority of its water from Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District, as well as secondary water that comes from the Welby Jacob Canal. In 2024, there was about 19,500 connections, 15,000 connections for culinary or drinking water, and then about 4,500 for secondary water or water that's used for irrigation purposes only. So, taking a look at comparing the local conservation efforts as well as the regional conservation efforts. Harriman's part of the Salt Lake region, and this is one of nine water regions that are designated in Utah. The Salt Lake region right now has the lowest average use in the state. That baseline for the Salt Lake region is 210 gallons per capita per day. So, as we saw from before, Harriman is below that regional baseline and set goals that are a little bit more aggressive than those regional goals. So, the baseline for Harriman, and this was tracked back to 2015, which is the baseline year for the region, Harriman was at 193. That baseline for the region is 210, and then looking at percentage decreases from 20 to 2030, 2040, and then 2065. So, you can see that Harriman is tracking a little bit below or more aggressively in reducing water consumption per person per day. So, one of the things that we are trying to do in this water element is celebrate and recognize the efforts that have already been taken by the city, and that includes some of the actions by the city, such as installing rain sensors at the city parks, having a reduced watering schedule, and then conducting water elements or water audits to better understand water use in your buildings and places. There's also been land use planning efforts, everything from those open space acquisitions, which tend to be not irrigated and use less water than developed properties, as well as implementing those water efficiency standards. And then, supporting just a mix of land uses and development patterns is probably one of the biggest efforts that cities can make to be more conscious of water use. The community... The community as well has stepped up. Those education campaigns that the city has initiated have responded, have the community responding, participating in rebates for things like low-flow toilets, smart irrigation controls, as well as landscape replacement programs for park strips and yards and reducing the amount of turf or water consumption landscaping. There's also participation in the rain barrel program to capture some of that rain water to use for irrigation as well. And then just that heightened level of awareness with the tiered water rates and the metering so that people can be aware of how much they're using and reduce when they see that they're using a little bit more than is targeted. As Michael mentioned, the structure of this element is intended to be consistent with the general plan. So not only in the structure, but it's consistent with that overall mission and vision and captured under that framework of just planning for stewardship. There's four key initiatives in the general plan, and the water element is supported and supports all of those initiatives, including growing wisely, optimizing those open spaces, maximizing your unique fiscal opportunities, and then enhancing and supporting your community and your culture. There's one overall goal for the element as well as seven objectives. And then we have a series of policies and strategies in the Making It Happen implementation section. And those address one of these three frameworks related to the state requirements. So reducing the demand for existing development, reducing it for future development, or implementing water-wise practices by Harriman City. The policies and strategies are also organized by topics. We have seven different topics, including community character, education and engagement, incentives and recognition, leading by example, implementing regulations and standards, and then monitoring and measurement and collaboration with other partners. So that's the quick overview. Open it up for questions and discussions that you might have before we move forward.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
If the council were to make a motion to approve this tonight, I know that Suzie has identified a few non-substantive corrections that she would request that we be allowed to be made. Also, Wendy caught the fact that ACUB is no longer the appropriate designation for that open space preservation program. So we need to update that reference in the general plan element.
Good to see you again, Suzie. Anything, any questions from?
My usual soap pops, just I'm grateful that they're now required. Should be forefront of all of our minds.
My question would be kind of tongue-in-cheek to Justin. On our water meters at our homes, can we get remote digital displays inside to see gallon per usage? That would be amazing.
We do have a dashboard that people can sign up and look, and we'll show you your daily usage. Yes, it's live.
Okay, wonderful.
You're not gonna see it to the minute, but you can go back and I can look at what I've used each day.
Yeah.
Fifteen minutes, yeah.
Okay, it's wonderful. I'm below 6,000, so I know that. I'm doing awesome.
No, that is a great tool that we have available to us, especially if you have, in the summer, if you have irrigation and you don't have, understand you have a leak underground or something like that, you're seeing exceptional amount of usage. That's an excellent tool.
Yeah, and that'd be great to see. They actually just came out and actually fixed my lateral last week, I think it was, in my own residence, and they were quick to respond when I recognized it. It was during the wet season, when it was raining every day, but it just would never dry out. So they came out that next morning and fixed it, so.
And I think that lets people really understand, like, when they might be, you know, on the cusp of, you know, going into that higher cost block rate for water. And so that's, you know, that's that financial incentive on a personal level to try to keep it down into those lower block rates.
Okay, we ready to adopt then? I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance Number two-zero-two-five dash two-six, amending the general plan to include a water use and preservation element as required by Utah Code, allowing staff to make non-substantive changes. Does that work? Corrections?
Second.
Okay, motion by Sherri, second by Jared. Jared?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Sherri?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. That motion carries. Thank you, Suzie. Good to have you here again. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
And Sherri, we're gonna do another tweak on our water-wise landscaping, so have one more chance to do something next month, so.
I love it. Thank you both. Okay, that brings us to the conclusion of our general meeting tonight. We do have a closed meeting, but future meetings, we have a Board of Canvassers meeting on the 18th at 5:00 PM. Planning Commission on the 19th at 7:00 PM. And our next council meeting will not be until December 10th at 7:00 PM. Teddy, you'll be gone, correct?
I may be present.
Okay.
But I want to make sure you hit events.
And then events. This Saturday, this is kind of cool. It's called the Cranksgiving Jump Party. It's at the new Juniper Canyon Jump Park, Bike Jump Park. You want to go check this out. I went out there the other day, drove the roller around a little bit. It was really cool. The people that helped us get the grant will be there at noon. So if anybody happens to be able to be by there Saturday at noon, just to tell them thank you. I mean, they have, they donated a big chunk of money to this. So they will be there Saturday at noon, if anybody's available. And then other lights. Night of Lights is coming up on December 1st. No, November, it is December 1st.
Well, we have the luau next Thursday at 11:00 AM.
Oh, the senior luau is next Thursday at 10:00.
11:00.
11:00?
11:00 AM. And then Night of Lights, December 1st.
December 1st. And that's up front here, six?
Six to eight.
Six to eight?
Yeah, somewhere in there.
Okay.
I don't know.
Lot of fun stuff coming up.
It's happening.
If it's cold, it'll be six to seven.
Let me get through tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right.
Wear a hat.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for tonight. I'll look for a motion to go to close, if anybody has a little. Give it to Sherri.
Okay, I make a motion to temporarily recess the city council meeting to go into closed meeting for the following purposes, provided in Utah State Code annotated fifty-two dash four dash two oh five, strategy session to discuss pending or reasonable imminent litigation.
Okay, motion by Sherri.
Second.
Second by Teddy. Jared? Teddy?
Yes.
Sherri?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. We're going to close. We'll go back into work meeting, into the council chambers. We need Nathan, Todd.
Blake.
Wendy Blake. That's it. And counsel. Thank you, everybody.